I'd like to call to order this Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Thank you all for joining us. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up passes on your way out, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the Board: In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. All right, we move to our consent agenda for this evening. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments about our consent agenda? All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Can we add the Fairview?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Horton. We do need to add the resolution for supporting the Fairview Parade.
It is on there online.
Chair, I just wanted to just make sure one clarification: It is actually an ordinance?
It's an ordinance, not a resolution.
But it's not, it's not a huge distinction, but there is a slight distinction, so we are adding the ordinance to the consent agenda.
Thank you for that, Mr. Euler. Do we have a motion to add the ordinance?
Motion to add the ordinance?
Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Ball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will have added the ordinance to the consent agenda. With that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented now?
The agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can take your pick between Whitesides and Moore. They said it at the exact same time.
I defer to my distinguished colleague.
All right, we'll use Commissioner Whitesides, who was in unison up here.
In harmony.
Sarah, we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who is here who wishes to speak but did not sign up? All right. Our next item on the agenda is our good news, and John Hudson is here to provide us more information about the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. Good evening, John, and team.
Good evening. The Buncombe County Budget Office has received the Government Finance Officers Association GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget document. This is the 31st year we have received the award. Additionally, we have received special recognition, our presentation of capital programming for the second consecutive year. An award-winning budget goes far beyond the work of my staff and I, and I also need to thank our Budget Officer, County Manager Avril Pinder, the Board of Commissioners, our collective group of Department Directors, and another 50-plus staff among departments who we collaborate with to ensure a balanced, thoughtful approach to budgeting. This is an extremely difficult year in light of the storm, and everyone pulled together to make this happen. Heather Holsey, Budget Analyst and professional cap wrangler, is the glue that binds our budget document together. Jay Shi has orchestrated the administration of our Capital Improvement Plan, his efforts are directly related to our special recognition, and Estraleo worked hard to build out our community profile. This year's document clocks in at less than 400 pages and is available for review on our website if you'd like to read it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Well-deserved honor and award. Thirty-one years in a row. That might be a record, right? Congratulations, you all.
We'll take it. Thank you.
Avril, do you have a manager's report this evening? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move into our first presentation, our Health and Human Services Board Annual Report is first up, and David Swett and Dr. Dan Frain are joining us to provide that information to us. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Frain. If they do not know him, he is the Chair of the Board of Health and Human Services. Dr. Dan Frain.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us to present this year's annual report for the Department of Health and Human Services. I've been a resident of Buncombe County for 20 years, and a practicing family physician, and I have the pleasure of being the Board Chair this year. So about us, we are a representative board with many positions that are required by statute, and we are blessed in Buncombe County to have so many engaged, highly active board members representing all of our fields to provide the advice and the perspectives, both from professional and from community perspectives. A special thank you to Commissioner Horton for being a representative this past year and being so engaged that she's the Vice Chair as well, which is not required, and so we appreciate that service. I will note that we do have one required position open, that is the engineer position, and we have three community-at-large positions that are still open. However, we have three candidates that are very viable that we will be presenting to this Board the next meeting, so we will only have that one engineer, and so we plead for any interested engineer in the county to consider being a part of this important Board. We are structured as a combined Health and Human Services Board, and therefore we service mainly as an advisory and a community voice in support and partnership with our HHS Director, David Swett. We are structured internally as having an executive committee and then program area committees that we have developed ourselves for more engagement. These, since 2021, it was actually a desire of the Board to become more engaged, to understand more in depth around the different service areas of HHS, that we were able to develop three concentrated committees, one focused on safety, primarily around the activities of DSS, the Economic Benefits Committee, and the Health Committee. So every meeting that the Board has, we start with a 45-minute breakout of committee that each board member is assigned to, where we can understand and learn much more in depth about each one of these areas, so that we can provide the director of those areas with more sound advice and support and advocacy than we would in a general county meeting. And so this structure has been working really well, but it does require extra dedication. So again, a shout out to the engagement of our board members that are spending the time and the effort in this service. So a couple of key advocacy and accomplishments of the Board. Of course, the thing that we want to highlight is the Board's active role after the hurricane, as we all remember how difficult and chaotic and challenging it was for certain services in the county, and it was actually an initiative of the board members themselves to become involved and help out the agency in providing services and sign-ups for DSNAP benefits within the initial weeks after the hurricane. We also are proud that we were able to continue an initiative that started out as a pilot and pioneered with the support of the board members, with a harm reduction, substance use, smoking, education initiative that showed very promising data, good initial results, and that as a board, we continue to support this initiative to move forward. So we're proud of those two big accomplishments of this past year. I'm going to turn it over to David to talk about the challenges that the Board of Health and Human Services will be facing this next year.
So the last time you had this report come before you was a week or so before the tropical storm Helene hit, so that obviously was a huge challenge for the entire county, including the Health and Human Services Agency, so we want to at least acknowledge that that occurred in the last year since you last heard from us. But the two big things that are currently representing challenges facing Department of Health and Human Services are the impacts of recent federal legislation and also the federal government shutdown. So on the recent federal legislation, OBBBA, what I want to just call to your attention is that we are currently engaged in an analysis of the impacts of that bill on both the workload of the staff and then also the financial impacts to Buncombe County as a result of provisions within that law. And we will be bringing you a presentation at the Budget Retreat in November to try to outline that in more detail for all of your information. So we just wanted to acknowledge that, in case that's on your mind, that you will be hearing a lot more about that next month, and then the federal government shutdown. What I can tell you is that as of right now, the U.S. Department of Agriculture-funded programs, which for us are WIC and Food Nutrition Services, SNAP primarily, are those that are most, I guess, at risk if we do not get a resolution to the government shutdown by October 31st. So we've received recent notice that there could be benefit disruption if we cross over into November. We continue to monitor that situation, and we'll keep you apprised if we get any instructions that are relevant to that. But right now, we are able to operate per normal through the end of October, and we are doing so, and we just anticipate there could be a disruption if this does not get resolved. So we'll keep you apprised.
So just to wrap up, the priorities for this next year for the Board are really to ensure and support uninterrupted operations, that any of these situations may cause, to really focus on the preparedness activities, if lessons learned from Helene, and preparing for any other, the next disaster, the next pandemic, the next challenges that we face as a community, and continue to assist and support recovery efforts. Those are our main priority areas for 2025-2026, and I will just end by saying how much of a pleasure it is to serve on this Board. We have an amazing Health and Human Services Department, and the Board that represents and advises that is, it's an honor to be a part of, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frain. Are there questions? All right, thank you both.
Sorry, I was briefly, so I'm just curious, has there ever been a pause in WIC and SNAP in recent memory, and what were the impacts of that?
There have been disruptions associated with various government shutdowns in the past. It has been a number of years since we had a government shutdown, and so this one seems a little different than some of the rest in the past. So at this point, we don't, we don't really know what the impacts will be. We know from the state that they are giving us notice and information updates as they receive them, but they also have to wait on federal guidance to come down to them on what they're supposed to do. We're trying to stay coordinated with all the other counties and with the state and continue to serve our clients as best we can.
My understanding is that when, in the past, when there's been disruptions, we often have to have folks who fall out of the program because of, they have to sign back up or whatever it may be, so we just really appreciate you staying on top of this and letting us know what we may need to do, or request our state delegation or federal delegation do to continue the services, and appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Thank you both for joining us. We appreciate you. Dr. Ellis Matheson is our Public Health Director, and she is going to provide a respiratory virus season update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this update. Today, I'm going to share what we know about the upcoming respiratory virus season and how together we can protect ourselves, our families, our communities. So first of all, let's talk about why does this really matter? So respiratory viruses remain the top cause of hospitalization and death. Vaccines and other preventable actions keep us healthy and working and learning and playing, and COVID-19 influenza and RSV do continue to circulate in our community. These viruses can impact all age groups, but especially our youngest, our oldest, and our medically vulnerable residents. Our goal is to really reduce preventable illness and to keep our systems resilient. So let's talk a little bit about what we expect to see this season. So COVID-19, it's possible we could see another potential winter surge. This in the past has been kind of variant-dependent. Last season, we didn't see a huge surge, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen this season, and it also could be at the same time around influenza and RSV, so seeing these peaks together. Influenza, flu, last season was a very severe flu season. It was the worst for child deaths since the H1N1 outbreak in 2009. There was 280 reported pediatric deaths during last season. On a good note, though, RSV, we do hopefully expect to see a lower burden due to there are new vaccines out for RSV that came out in 2023, so we're hoping that we'll continue to see the benefits of those coming out. We're going to take a little deeper dive into each one of these. So for COVID-19, the outlook, we do have an updated vaccine that targets the currently circulating variants. We know that vaccines help lower the risk of hospitalizations and death, and just like we talked about, we know that all these things can peak together at the same time, so co-occurring infections can be potentially deadly. So let's look at a little bit of data around COVID-19, and so this graph here is showing the level of care needed for those admitted to the hospital with COVID-19 last season for North Carolina, and this is showing from last October all the way to this October. The gray bars in the back are the number of people admitted to the hospital with COVID-19. The dark blue bars are the number of people who were admitted to the hospital that needed ICU-level care, and the orange line is the percentage of those people admitted to the hospital who needed ICU care. You can see with the gray bars kind of where are different peaks that we have been typically seeing around the holidays and then in the summer. This last sort of peak that you can see was what we were just experiencing August and September. And so with the orange line, there is one point where you can see about 30% of the people who were admitted to the hospital needed ICU-level care. That's a high percentage, and that can put a real strain on our hospital systems. And, you know, COVID-19 cases, individual cases and deaths are not reportable anymore, but we do know that we still have deaths associated with COVID-19. So looking a little deeper into flu, like I said, last season was particularly severe. North Carolina reported 544 flu-related deaths. Once again, that's the highest number reported since the 2009 H1N1 pandemic. And then also as well, last season, Buncombe County, 19 residents, including one child, did die from flu-related illnesses. So once again, we really know that vaccination is critical to preventing hospitalization and death. So far this season, we have not seen the big surge of flu cases, but North Carolina has already reported the first death of the season. So I really encourage people, go ahead and get vaccinated, especially children, seniors, and those with chronic conditions. It can take two weeks for your full immunity to build up from those vaccines. And so a little data around this, once again, flu season runs from October through May. This slide here is showing us the past three seasons, and the red and the dark gray are our last two seasons that we had, and you can see there's very, very high peaks in the last two seasons. And then the lighter gray, which was 2022 to 23, the peak was not as high, but you can see it's much earlier in the season. And so this is really sort of pointing out the unpredictability that flu can have, so once again highlighting why it's so important to go ahead and get vaccinated now. And then finally, RSV, so we have new vaccines. We have a vaccine for adults 60 and older and pregnant individuals, monoclonal antibodies for infants and high-risk toddlers, and we really do expect to see this to reduce pediatric hospitalizations. This is the first full season where it's widely available to everyone, so we're really optimistic about the impact. And this data slide here is showing the weekly rate of RSV hospitalizations over the last seven seasons. And in the beginning over here, you can see that it's lower. We did see lower hospitalizations for flu and RSV during the height of the pandemic. Most likely, people, you know, we were staying away from crowds, we were wearing masks, so we did see that, but then you can see in '23, it really went back up for RSV, and that is the same year the vaccines came out, and now we can see that progression downward each year, so hopefully we are just going to continue that trend down. So what are the recommendations for 2025? First of all, I really want to acknowledge, it has been confusing for the recommendations this year, and so really the bottom line that I want to emphasize is I want people to go and talk with your medical provider, your community pharmacist, or come to our clinic at 40 Cox Avenue and talk with a nurse about which vaccines are right for you. We are definitely working with providers to ensure that there's access and awareness of these recommendations, and so I'll just go through these briefly. For the COVID-19 vaccine, it is FDA-approved for children six to 23 months and ages two through 18 years old with a high-risk condition, all pregnant persons, persons ages 65 and older, and those from ages 18 to 65 with a high-risk condition. The ACIP also came out with a recommendation that is slightly different, and their recommendation that anyone who wants to receive protection can receive the vaccine by having a conversation with their medical provider, a community pharmacist, or a nurse, such as in our clinic at 40 Cox Avenue, and receive that vaccine. The flu vaccine recommendation remains the same as previous years, and it's recommended for everyone six months and older, also for pregnant persons, and the RSV antibodies are recommended for infants younger than eight months and those eight months through 19 months with risk factors, and the RSV vaccine is recommended for pregnant persons and of gestational age 32 to 36 weeks, and also those, the ages of 75 and older and persons 50 through 74 with risk factors. So that's a lot. How can people protect themselves? So stay home if you're sick. Can't emphasize that enough. Wash your hands, one of our best protection measures, and cover your cough. And then once again, talk with your medical provider, pharmacist, or nurse, and get vaccinated. Vaccines really do still remain our best tool in our toolbox to prevent infection for ourselves, our family, and our community. I personally recently went and received my COVID and flu vaccine at the same time because I know I want to be out looking at these wonderful leaves that we have and that we can appreciate this year and not home sick in my bed. Both of my 82-year-old parents are here in the area, and I like to spend as much time with them as possible, but I don't want to bring illness to them that could put them in the hospital. So I really encourage anyone that, everyone needs to think about protecting themselves, protecting their family, and protecting our community. And so how do you access the vaccine? Pharmacies. It's widely available in a lot of pharmacies across our community, some community medical providers, and then once again, you can come to our Buncombe County Immunization Clinic at 40 Cox Avenue. We take appointments as well as walk-ins. You can call 828-250-5096 to schedule an appointment or ask any questions. So once again, I encourage everyone to get vaccinated, and let's have a healthy and safe respiratory season. Any questions?
Thank you, Ellis, for this very helpful information, and are we doing any kind of educational campaign as well as getting this information out there in the community?
Yes, we are definitely working with our K team now, who is phenomenal, getting a lot of information out through our social media as well as other media opportunities. I have one to speak about it tomorrow.
Wonderful, thank you. And then with our mobile public health, are they also out doing any vaccinations as well?
Absolutely, they are. They're typically doing two to three events every week, and they always have vaccine available.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Matheson? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate the work that you're doing, and we'll help spread the word on vaccinations, too. We still have several public hearings this evening. Haley Madfis is on her way up to discuss the Edens map amendment.
Hello, my name is Haley Madfis, and this is the review of ZPH 2023, sorry, 2025-00025, the Edens map amendment. This hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That includes a legal ad in the local newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet, a notice on the county's website, and physical postings on the site. The applicant and owner is Kevin Edens. The address of the property is 2596 Hendersonville Road. The land to be rezoned is one parcel with an area of .92 acres. The current use is a residential building lot. It is served by public water and septic. The application is to rezone from R2 Residential to CS Commercial. You can see that the current zoning map is on the left-hand side of the slide, and the proposed proposed rezoning is on the right. This parcel is located in an area identified by Buncombe County's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map as Mixed Use 1, which aligns with the CS zoning district. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the zoning districts. If the rezoning request is approved, the minimum allowed lot size would decrease if serviced by sewer. The required setbacks from the property lines would decrease. The maximum allowed height of the structures would increase. The types of uses allowed on the property would increase. R2 zoning district is a residential zoning district. The CS zoning district would allow for a variety of commercial uses. Examples of new uses are veterinary clinics, banks, greenhouses, kennels, dry cleaners, medical clinics, retail, gas stations, nightclubs, gyms, post office, our planned unit development 2, which is a commercial planned unit development, schools, storage and warehousing, et cetera. So, currently, the surrounding developments include commercial, low-density residential, a park, office buildings, retail sales, and warehouse storage. This rezoning request has been found to be consistent with the number of county plan recommendations, such as the county's future land use map category description, the proximity to sewer and city water, the density, the proximity to a transportation corridor, the avoidance of any overlay districts or floodplain, and the proximity to other commercial areas. We did have one inconsistency, which is the proposed rezoning does not allow for any transition between higher-intensity uses and lower-intensity uses. And while there won't be a zoning transition between CS and R2, if this rezoning is approved, the zoning ordinance does require a buffer between any commercial use and residential use. So, for these reasons, staff does recommend approval. The planning board unanimously recommended approval at their meeting on 8/18/2025. Does the board have any questions for me?
I do have two really quick questions. As best I can tell, well, first, thank you for your work on this. Second, did the planning board have any public comment or any issues arise that we wouldn't know about?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And the second, looking at Slide 8, just for reference, you don't have to put it up, but it looks like the parcel next to it is kind of a private park. There's no one presently living there, so we're not obstructing someone's home or anything like that?
That's right. That's a park associated with the subdivision. So, it's just serves, is an amenity for the subdivision behind that parcel.
And otherwise, it looks completely commercial on all sides surrounding, as best I can tell. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's a, there's a lot of commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, are there other questions? If not, we will open the public hearing at 5:37. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? All right. We will close the public hearing at 5:37. If there are no further questions or discussion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we need to have an official?
You need the full language?
Full language? About consistency?
Sure. Give me one second. I'll pull this back up here. I was looking too far in the presentation. All right. I'll make a motion to approve as it is consistent with all Buncombe County standards ordinances.
Do we have a second?
I could.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Amendment carries. Thank you all. And I misspoke that we had several public hearings. We had one. We'll move into new business, and John Hudson, our budget director, has a budget amendment for us to establish a recovery office and increase our HALEen budget. Good evening, John.
Good evening. This budget amendment follows up on the item heard at briefing this afternoon, requesting an additional $14,1245 for HALEen-related projects to include landslides, radio tower, road repairs, and park projects, including initial work on Owen Park. We're also asking to establish five grant-funded positions, two fiscal analysts, and three project managers to serve in the recovery office as we continue this fight of work.
John, can you speak to the source of funds for that $14 million, please?
Yes, right now, we're looking, the source of funds, we'd look at a variety of funding, but right now, we're looking at FEMA reimbursement for most of this. The landslide funding is fully reimbursable. It's actually 75% upfront, once we sign the contracts to begin the work. And there's about 7% of that, those dollars that can be used towards admin funding, which can help support salaries for positions.
I think it was mentioned by Jeremiah earlier that there were grants that were also being applied for. Is this part of that?
This, this is not specific to grants yet.
Okay.
Almost all, this is public assistance or permanent work through FEMA. So, the tower road repairs are actually public assistance. Owen Park is initial engineering and design, and so, some of that is FEMA permanent work. However, we are looking for other grant sources because we don't know exactly where we'll land on how much it'll, how much it'll cost to rebuild Owen Park. So, there, we may need a variety of funding to support the full rebuild of that park. The additional parks projects are other parks, Alexander River Park, and these are already submitted in the FEMA portal as existing projects, as are the landslides.
Are there questions for John?
When will we receive the money from FEMA? Do we have any idea?
I would have to defer to some of my experts. And however, we do know even before, even before we saw some of the different behaviors from the current administration around FEMA reimbursement, major disasters, looked at four to six years of full reimbursement for, most reimbursement for damages.
You have an expert on when we're going to get paid by FEMA, because I'd love to meet that person.
If there was that person, they would probably make a lot more money than I do.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, Doug, can you speak a little bit about, speak a little bit to the landslide item and what that work looks like, where that's happening?
Well, that, I believe that's engineering work. I do not have the specific landslide projects in front of me.
Yeah, I just asked Tim to come up.
Tim's coming.
There he is. He's an engineer of a different sort.
Good evening, commissioners. So, the question, I think, was related to landslide remediation. So, our process that we work out with FEMA and NCEM is to begin our landslide remediation projects with A and E, so architecture and engineering. And what we worked on with FEMA and NCEM, North Carolina Emergency Management specifically, was piloting certain landslide projects. And so, we did a risk assessment based on that. One of the first landslides that kind of raised the list, or top of the list, rather, was the Grove Mont landslide, which is actually a misnumbered, multiple landslides that kind of came together. And so, that project, we went out for an RFQ, we're finalizing the contract negotiations, and we'll begin the design and engineering for that, which will tell us what the possible solution is, if any, for that specific landslide, at which point, we would go back to FEMA and NCEM with the proposed remediation strategy and an estimated cost, which would then need to be approved again by FEMA and NCEM before we could proceed into a construction project. As John alluded to, we did negotiate a process with the state and FEMA on this, so that the majority of these funds are advanced to us, so that we have less cash flow constraints given the scale of the cost. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And just to clarify, so you're saying, did you say 75% of the cost of this are being fronted to us?
That's correct. And the 75, it would come in tranches. So, the 75% of the A and E, the architecture and engineering, and then, the same process when we get to construction. So, 75% upfront, which means that, you know, there's a portion that we would have to wait for, but it helps us get through.
Thanks for that clarification.
And to also add to that, we view this as a model, you know, that hopefully can be applied in other jurisdictions, so.
And the important part of that is we don't have an agreement on the construction, how to fix it or mitigate it. Right now, it's just studying and designing what the fix could be.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, motion to approve budget amendment and establish five grant-funded positions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Moore, seconded by Commissioner Horton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, budget amendment carries. Thank you, John, and thank you, Tim. All right, our next item this evening, we have board appointments to make for the Board of Adjustments. We had some great interviews today. We have three positions to appoint with four alternate positions to appoint, and we will start with Commissioner Wells, and we'll tally up the first three people for the regular Board of Adjustment position. And just remember to go slow. Sarah and I are tallying up here.
Okay. My three for the regular board appointments.
Can you make sure your mic's on? Sorry.
Mark, Gabe, and Greg.
Mark. Mark, Gabe, and Greg. Commissioner Ball.
I am also going with Gregory Phillips, Mark Diaz, and Gabriel Quisenberry.
This is hard. The interviews are great. I'm going to say Greg Phillips, Catherine Morisani, and Gabe Quisenberry.
All right. And I'm going with Greg Phillips, Gabe Quisenberry, and Mark Diaz. Commissioner Whitesides.
Phillips, Morisani, and Quisenberry.
Great. And Commissioner Horton?
Phillips, Quisenberry, and Diaz.
Commissioner Whitesides.
Top three there. I had Gregory Phillips, Gabe Quisenberry, and Mark Diaz.
That's correct. That's what I had as well. All right, so we'll move into our four alternate seats, and again, we'll start with Commissioner Wells.
Can we take 30 seconds? Because I imagine we're recalculating based on.
Yes, absolutely.
And did you say you needed more time before I began?
Martin just needs.
You can go ahead. I'll be done by the time, yeah. It's fine.
If not, we'll skip and come back. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
David Barley and Tom Belt.
I will choose four. David Barley, William or Tom Belt, and then Wesley Green and Carol McCrory.
Commissioner Wells, did you do two or four? You did two. Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure I got that right. All right. Are you ready?
So, I will say, we'll just do all four. Catherine Morisani, David Barley, Tom Belt, and Wesley Green.
And Wesley Green.
I'm sorry.
Sure. Catherine Morisani.
Yep.
David Barley.
Yes.
William or Tom Belt.
Yes.
And Wesley Green.
Thank you.
All right. And I am going to select Tom Belt and David Barley. Commissioner Whitesides.
I have four, right?
You can have four, yes.
Morisani, Green, Belt, and Barley.
Okay. And Commissioner Horton? Are you ready?
I am. I'm going to do three. McCrory, Belt, and Barley.
And do we need the majority to get all four appointed? Because I know some, not everyone voted for four. The problem with that is the Board of Adjustment needs its full set of alternates. Otherwise, they're not going to be able to have their meetings. So, I appreciate the principle of sand, it's fine. Do we need the full majority to vote for all four people for the alternates?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. We just take the top four vote-getters?
If that's how you want to do it, if you're voting as a block, but I think that for each person that you appoint, there needs to be a majority of commissioners agreeing that that person should be appointed, whether it's a permanent position or an alternate position.
So, would it help if you clean, if we clean this up and I just make a motion to approve the slate as stated with the conference of vote altogether? Because right now, what we're doing is not even a formal vote, right?
Well, it sounds like to me, if there's four candidates and there's four open seats, that could be a slate, but it seems like a couple of the commissioners only nominated two people. So, I think the question would be is whether the two people, the other two people are, there would be a majority for the people who didn't get the.
Right, that's what I'm asking, is what happens to those people who only have one, two, three votes.
Right, so commissioners.
Well, if we see what Sarah comes up with, like, are the four, and then, we can just, we can approve the top four, make a motion.
I'm fine with that.
So, where we landed right now, there is a top three. Wesley Green, I'm sorry. Yes, Wesley Green, Tom or William Belt, and David Barley. And then, the other two are tied with two votes, and that would be Catherine Morisani and Carol McCrory.
So, Sarah, did Wesley Green get four votes or three?
Wesley Green got three, by my count.
So, I think he needs to look at, because we need a majority of the board to see.
Oh, I see the four, okay.
So, it would be Wesley Green, Carol McCrory, and Morisani needs to be relooked at again.
So, we need to do another, we need two more seats, so we need to, of those three, select.
Four, three, yeah.
So, we're saying David and Tom are good.
Are good.
Are good. Now, we need to go back around and choose two.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Wesley and Carol. Thank you.
Commissioner Ball.
I will choose Wesley Green and Carol McCrory.
Okay.
Wait, didn't Wesley already get it? Are we?
No.
Wesley did not.
They only had the three votes.
So, now, we're choosing two among.
Among the three.
That's correct.
Okay. And our three are Green, Belt, and, sorry, Green, McCrory, and.
McCrory and Morisani.
Morisani.
Uh huh.
Okay. I'm going to say Green and Morisani.
Okay. And I'm going to say McCrory and Green.
Green and Morisani.
Green and Morisani.
Green, you ready? Green and McCrory.
Green and McCrory. Okay. I think we got a majority that time.
Yep. From those, that final vote, I have Wesley Green and Carol McCrory.
Okay. So, then, our alternates are Tom Belt, David Barley, Wesley Green, and Carol McCrory. Is that correct?
For the alternates.
For the alternates, okay. All right, so do we have a motion to approve Greg Phillips, Gabe Quisenberry, and Mark Diaz as our regular members, and our four alternates, Carol McCrory, Wesley Green, Tom Belt, and David Barley? Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, thank you all. And thanks, these were great interviews. We appreciate people and their willingness to serve on, on this board. It comes with a lot of responsibility. All right. Commissioners, are there any board updates from boards and commissions that you serve on? All right.
Well, I'll go ahead and offer, and I appreciate Commissioner Whitesides, but we're doubling down on the early childhood meetings in November, just to make sure we get the work done. We're in the process of our site visits, which has been extremely informative, as far as understanding what the community need is, especially post-Haleen in the early childhood education space. So I'm grateful to serve on that committee.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Ball?
Not a committee, but a coalition that we're part of. I did spend last Thursday evening and Friday with the Western North Carolina Partnership through the American Flood Coalition. And that was in Banner Elk. It's a group of bipartisan elected officials from across western North Carolina. And that day, really focused on ensuring we are up to date on resources that exist, and we did a lot to talk about what we want the coalition to focus on in our second year. And there was a shared agreement that continuing to help us pursue state and federal resources and, you know, share as a consortium among these folks so that we can continue to work together and show a united front and fighting for our recovery.
And thank you for your willingness to serve on that. We appreciate it. Commissioner Wells, any updates? Okay, great. Thank you all so much.
I want.
Yes, go ahead.
I attended, now I'm representing us for the Asheville Downtown Improvement District. And that, that was an interesting meeting. You threw me right in. I mean, we had the, I attended the first meeting, and then a few days later, we had the two half-day sessions of the retreat. And it was worthwhile. I enjoyed it, yeah. Good information.
We appreciate you serving.
And I think we're heading in the right direction, I hope.
Good. Thank you for taking that on and jumping headfirst into it with that two-day retreat. Any other updates? All right. Our next briefing will be held on November 4th at 3 o'clock in the first floor conference room. We'll be back down there. And then our next regular meeting will be at 5 o'clock up here in Chambers. Kurt, do we have a close session this evening?
No, we do not.
All right. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. I heard Vice Chair Moore, do we have a second?
I do, second.
Second, Whitesides. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thanks for the meeting, y'all.